Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the June Hoboken Board of Education meeting. I am just filling in for Ms. McGurk tonight, but would like to take this time to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and restful summer. It's hard to believe that the school year is already coming to an end. It went by really fast, and we have so much to be thankful for. So I welcome you all tonight. And with that being said, Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on May 31, 2024. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on C A T V Channel 77 and FiOS Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs, which could be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices on the course of the meeting. And if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Can we take the roll call, please? Oh, sorry. Please rise for the flexible seats.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a liberal, invisible, 13 adjustments for.
Now, can we take your roll call, please?
Ms. Angley.
Here.
Ms. Katerina Torrey.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Mr. Grana.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffel.
Here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
Ms. McGurk, you have a call.
Okay. We are going to start the meeting off with our student recognition, so I would invite Ms. Rodriguez Gomez to the podium, please.
Welcome to the final month of this academic year. June is a month dedicated to reflection and introspection. As students and educators, we will remember all that was learned and shift priorities as needed to continue to excel in the upcoming school year. I am delighted to once again bring greetings to all in attendance and a warm welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, our administrators, faculty who should be present, community members, students, and of course, their very special guests, their families. In a few minutes, I will be introducing our talented principals, and they will take the podium to share detailed information and wonderful anecdotes about the students being honored here tonight. This evening, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of our students, who are being celebrated as Students of the Month for both the months of May and June. You will hear about who they are and who they strive to be. You will hear about their current accomplishments and the ones they will attain in the future. These students were driven to succeed, and their efforts have paid off. We are so very proud of each of you and can't wait to hear about your stories of success and perseverance. We will, of course, begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School and its proud principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will then introduce the Connors Vice Principal, Mr. Hamlin, and he will follow this same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Supervisor Hernandez, Principal Sorefin, and Principal Pica Petra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School, respectively. Each will celebrate their school's selections and pause for a picture opportunity. Again, thank you for being with us this evening. And with that, I would ask Mr. Bartlett to join me at the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Johnson, members of the Board of Education, and our guests here tonight. At this time, I would like to ask Frank Perez to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Frank Perez, the Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for May 2024. Frank was nominated by his fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Abrontes. He was nominated for his consistent hard work, growth, being a role model to his classmates, and his kindness and respect towards himself and others. Ms. Abrontes said she couldn't be more proud of Frank for bringing Brandt School Student of the Month. Frank comes into class each day with a smile and positive attitude that can turn anyone's day around. He is always willing to help his classmates and teachers. He is understanding and gives everything 100% each day, even if things get hard. He is personable, sweet, silly, curious, hardworking, and so kind and caring. Having Frank in my class has been such a special experience. I've known Frank for several years, and simply put, he is just a good kid. He does the right thing and always tries his best. He works to help those around him, and he is always one of the students I can count on to be a great example of what we expect of our Brandt students. Frank is an asset to our school community because he is always willing to help. He perseveres even when things get hard, and he truly never gives up. His resilience and ability to stay the course are a great example for his peers and classmates. He always wants to include his classmates in activities. Frank is someone that can be very quiet, but also very silly and outgoing. He loves to joke around with his friends and classmates, and he loves to make his teachers laugh. He is accepting and is always a comfort to students who might need it. If you're having a bad day, go to Frank, because he will talk to you and encourage you to turn your day around. Frank has a smile that truly lights up the entire room. He is someone we've seen grow over the course of the years in ways that are truly immeasurable. He is a bright spot in our school. Frank is always engaged during the school day and loves to ask questions and solve problems. When not in school, Frank likes to play games, play sports like basketball, baseball, and football, and he loves music. He does not know where he wants to go to college, but he wants to be a firefighter when he grows up. Frank said, "When I found out I was the Student of the Month, I was surprised." For other kids who want to be Student of the Month, they should listen to their teachers, do good things, and be leaders, not followers. Frank, you are definitely on your way to great things because you are always thinking of others. Please join me in congratulating Frank Perez, our Brandt Student of the Month for May. And at this time, I would like to ask Brielle Fowler to join me at the podium. Congratulations to Brielle Fowler, the Brandt Student of the Month for June 2024. Brielle was nominated by her fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Doler, because of her impressive ability to overcome tough obstacles with a smile on her face. Brielle is a strong person who deserves to be recognized for the hard work that she exhibits in every aspect of her life. Ms. Doler said, "Brielle and I both started at Brandt this year and experienced our first day of school in Brandt together. Brielle's growth from the day I met her is incredible. I'm so proud of everything that she's accomplished. As principal, I've watched Brielle emerge as a quiet leader. She isn't the loudest or most outspoken. She lets her actions speak for her. She was part of our Girls on the Run group, who helped raise $233 to donate to the Hoboken Community Center pantry through a bake sale. Over the course of the year, Brielle has earned the Kindness Award, the Physical Education Award, the Perfect Attendance Award, and earned a spot on the honor roll. She is an asset to the school and to the student body by displaying all the important values of Brandt. She consistently helps keep the classroom clean without ever being asked and always goes out of her way to hold the door open for her teachers and peers. She approaches her assignments with focus and purpose and is willing to contribute to class discussions in a thoughtful manner. Brielle enjoys playing sports, especially running. Her favorite subject is English Language Arts. Her favorite artist is Taylor Swift because she is fearless and speaks her mind. She hopes to one day attend Lynn University just like her parents. Brielle would love to pursue a career in athletics, preferably a long-distance runner. Brielle said, "The advice I would give people to become Student of the Month is do your best and believe in yourself. If you keep doing your best and believing in yourself, Brielle, I have no doubt that you will accomplish all of your goals." Please join me in congratulating our Brandt Student of the Month for June, Brielle Fowler. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium Mr. Jack Hamlin, the Vice Principal of Connors Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. At this time, I would like to call up Rocco Rosetto, the Connors May Student of the Month. All right, congratulations to Rocco Rosetto, the Connors May Student of the Month, a fourth grader in Ms. Stube's class. Ms. Stube shared that Rocco excels both academically and socially. He is a super warm and caring student. His wonderful friendships that he has created in and out of the classroom. Rocco actively participates during the lessons by answering and asking insightful questions. He often relates activities and lessons to each other, showing his strong understanding of his learning. He completes all of his assignments thoughtfully, making sure to show his work and answer everything with intention. Rocco has embraced the fourth grade this year, often exceeding the academic expectations in reading, writing, math, and critical thinking skills. He often pushes himself beyond what is expected. After school, Rocco enjoys playing drums and the bass. He's been playing these instruments for five years now. He participates in many concerts throughout the year. He also enjoys going to the park with his friends. While these activities bring him joy, they also show how dynamic Rocco is. Rocco is unsure what he wants to do when he grows up, and the question stumps him due to his varying interests. Some of his interests right now include reading Percy Jackson and the heroes of the Olympus series. When Rocco found out that he was nominated for Student of the Month, he was thrilled. He was proud of himself and wanted to share the information with friends and family. One thing he enjoys most at home is cooking food with his family. His favorite food is pizza. He also expressed how much he enjoys going on walks and playing tennis with his dad. Rocco's favorite subjects in school are math, E L A, and science. In math, he enjoyed the line plot unit and conducting surveys. He conducted his survey about the wingspan lengths of his classmates with a partner. In E L A, he enjoys the book the class is currently reading, Who Let the Gods Out? He also enjoys his independent reading as well. Another favorite subject is science because the content is so interesting. I had a chance to sit down with Rocco, and he shared how much he loves being in Ms. Stube's class because she is so helpful, caring, and takes time to explain things so students understand them. Rocco also loves his friends in his different classes. I shared with Rocco how incredibly kind, thoughtful, and responsible he is and how deserving he is to be awarded Connors Student of the Month. We cannot be more proud of you, Rocco, and your accomplishments. Can everyone please join me in congratulating Rocco, the Connors Student of the Month? Thank you, Mr. Stasiak. At this time, I'd like to bring up Nolan Goldberg, our Connors May, a June Student of the Month. All right, congratulations to Nolan. Once again, Connors June, Student of the Month and a third grader in Ms. Gillen's homeroom class. Ms. Gillen shared that Nolan has made enormous growth this year, both personally and academically. Throughout the year, Nolan has consistently worked toward doing his absolute best during each school day. Nolan is someone who is consistently completing his homework, including adding extra key details and text evidence in each night write. Nolan has grown tremendously in both math and E L A, always looking for challenging enrichment problems. Nolan loves asking Ms. Gillen to help him solve advanced math problems, such as multiplying fractions and dividing three-digit numbers. During the first marking period, Nolan won the Responsibility Koala Character Award. And during the third marking period, Nolan won Koala-Fied Effort for his top-notch academic effort. Nolan has earned honor roll recognition each marking period throughout the 23-24 school year. Ms. Gillen also shared that outside of school, Nolan shares a love for all things sports. He has a passion for tennis, basketball, baseball, and soccer. It was a joy to attend many of his basketball games and see him work as a team player outside of school. Nolan spends every summer at camp, where he explores many different outdoor activities. All year, Nolan has expressed his love for camp, and he really looks forward to going back again this summer. Soon now. Ms. Gillen shared that Nolan Goldberg has been a light in homeroom 212 since the first day in September. He is a student who not only shows academic excellence, but is extremely kind and respectful to all of his peers and teachers around him. Nolan is someone who consistently is a leader and a role model to all. We are so proud of the way he shows compassion, empathy, and love toward everyone who crosses his path. Nolan's mom shared that Nolan is a really good friend to everyone and that he cares about his friends both inside and outside of school. He's a great listener and is attentive to everyone's needs and feelings. He's also a great brother. He is always so supportive of his brothers. His mom also shared that she's so proud of how Nolan always wants to assure that everyone feels included. A few years ago, we had some students come to Connors from New Zealand. And Nolan wanted to make sure that the new students felt comfortable and included in the new school. Nolan's brothers participate in the Best Buddies Program at Hoboken Middle School. Nolan has become an honorary best buddy. As a family, they did the Best Buddies Walk together, and Nolan loves to make sure that everyone felt included. Nolan's super excited to join the Best Buddies Program soon. Nolan, you were chosen as Student of the Month because you exhibit all of the character traits that we call Connors Koalities. You are respectful, caring, trustworthy, responsible, and always fair. We cannot be more proud of you. Can everyone please join me in a round of applause to congratulate Nolan? I would like to now call up to the podium, representing Wallace Elementary School Supervisor Hernandez.
Can I have Nolemy Lopez, please? Tonight, we are here to celebrate Nolemy Lopez for the Wallace Student of the Month of May. Nolemy is well-liked by her peers and teachers. She is kind, cooperative, respectful, and driven. She goes out of her way to help other students daily. Her consideration for others is clearly seen when she is collaborating with her peers, when working hard in class. Her teacher, Mrs. Tagleary, is very fond of Nolemy's. She described her as a wonderful young lady who is extremely polite and courteous, who always completes her work on time and goes above and beyond for her friends. Some things to know about Nolemy's. She is actively taking part in cheering, and she is very close to her family. She often shares how much she loves them. The quote, "Good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better and your better is best", by Saint Jerome, illustrates Nolemy's determination to succeed in school. Nolemy's worked hard to meet the goals that she set for herself this school year. She recognized that she needed to improve her reading and writing skills. She set a goal and kept at it even when she felt challenged. She completed assignments on time, studied, and was prepared for class. Nolemy's made significant academic progress this school year and should be extremely proud of her performance and accomplishments. Let's hear it for Nolemy, our May Wallace Student of the Month. And our June Student of the Month, Ahana Visay. Okay. Ready?
Yeah. Ahana is a conscientious, hard-working student. She takes pride in her work and exceeds expectations with the quality of work she produces. Ahana is a steady and committed student, day in and day out. She is full of energy and is always positive in different situations. She takes on every day with a positive attitude, which helps her build her knowledge and investigate new ideas. She listens well and eagerly shares her thoughts in class discussions. For the past two years, Ahana has been enrolled in the John Hopkins Center for Talented Youth Math Program. She has shown an incredible amount of hard work and dedication in both her studies and time-management skills. In the C T Y space, Ahana continues to amaze us with her confidence and independence. It is an honor to watch Ahana learn and grow, year after year. Ahana is an excellent role model for her peers. She is caring and respectful. She enjoys helping her peers and is willing to work with anyone. She enjoys lending a helping hand to her teachers and classmates. Her kind and caring attitude puts a smile on the face of everyone she meets. I am so proud to see her grow and flourish in class. Keep up the amazing work. Congratulations on a job well done. Let's hear it for Ahana, our June Wallace Student of the Month.
And if I could have Principal Sorefin to the podium?
Good evening. Please welcome to the podium John Smith, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for May. John is a seventh-grade student at Hoboken Middle School and was nominated for Student of the Month by our guidance counselor, Ms. Falcone. Ms. Falcone nominated John for his enthusiasm, leadership, and overall positive attitude as a Hoboken Middle School Ambassador during our Tiger-for-a-Day series. We had approximately 100 students sign up to be ambassadors this spring, and I can say that without any hesitation, John was a standout ambassador. He was organized and preparing for the day for our future Tigers. Additionally, if a fifth-grade student asked a question that John didn't necessarily know the answer to, he went to Ms. Falcone right away so he could provide the student with the response. John embraced his role as a leader at Hoboken Middle School, and I could not be more proud. Mr. Tambur shares that he observed John as an ambassador firsthand. Mr. Tambur states, "I was fortunate to observe his strong tendencies as a leader while he showed our future Hoboken Middle School Tigers the ins and outs of the middle school." Although he was a fantastic role model for these younger students, he personifies what it means to be a model H M S Tiger on a daily basis. "It has truly been a pleasure getting to know John inside the classroom as well as on the hardwood at recess." You guys play? All right, good. "I look forward to seeing his growth continue into eighth grade. John has also been a model student in math class for the duration of the year. He is quick to help out other students in need and does so without hesitation. He is extremely selfless in this regard. Whether he is helping others understand math concepts or lending an extra hand while building our project lead-the-way creations, he is constantly looking to make a positive contribution inside of the classroom and does so with an infectious smile on his face." Mr. De Mayo shares that John is a pleasure to have in class. Not only is he a great athlete, he is a great leader and demonstrates proper sportsmanship in class. John understands that he is a leader and that his actions can affect others around him, and I hope he continues to grow as an athlete and a young man. Mr. Di Bandinetto shares that John has been working positively to complete his assignments in science class, including a slideshow presentation where he described the five major biomes present around the world. More importantly, John is a great friend to his peers, whether on the basketball court, the football field, or in the classroom. John is eager to lend a helping hand whenever he can. John has also proven to be a respectful student who appreciates his teachers and the opportunities presented to him within the school community. John's friend Tariq shares that John is a good friend because he never lets his friends down and always helps him when he has tough times. When asked how John felt receiving this honor, John said he was shocked and happy. When he graduates eighth grade, John hopes to attend Hoboken High School and then head off to college, hopefully to his school of choice, U C L A. As a career, John plans to focus on honing in on his football skills or to pursue a profession that uses math, his current favorite subject in school. John, we have been together since you were in second grade at Connors. This day especially is emotional for me because I have always seen this day coming. I hope you realize the impact you have on the world as a leader, an athlete, but most of all, a student who is capable of anything. John, I am so proud of you. Please join me in a round of applause for Student of the Month, John Smith.
Please welcome to the podium Vigo Kronstrom, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for June. Vigo is an eighth-grade student at Hoboken Middle School and was nominated by his E L A teacher, Ms. Nodine. Ms. Nodine shares that Vigo's dedication to his academics is one of his many admirable qualities. When faced with a challenge in class, Vigo remains motivated to learn and succeed. Vigo's respect for all members of the school community is a great illustration of his tiger pride. Vigo's contributions to discussions in E L A class this year have been outstanding, and his display of character will guide his success in high school and beyond. Ms. Wooton adds that Vigo is an exceptional student whose presence in class lights up the room. Vigo encourages other students in class all the time and leads by example on a daily basis. Ms. Fernandez shares that Vigo's hard work and positive impact do not go unnoticed in science class. His dedication to his studies, positive attitude, and willingness to help others make him a true asset to the classroom and school community. Vigo exemplifies the H M S core values perseverance, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. Mr. De Mayo shares that Vigo is a great athlete and teammate. Vigo is always eager to participate and step it up. It is easy to see why he is deserving of Student of the Month. The eighth-grade team asked Vigo's peers in his cohort of classes to describe Vigo as a friend and classmate. "Vigo, here's what your classmates had to say about you. Vigo, you are a very nice classmate, and I appreciate you helping me with my work. You have such a nice smile that make everyone's day when you say good morning. You are a very intelligent student. You have so much ahead of you. You have a bright future. Vigo, you are one of the nicest kids I have ever met. You are smart, talented, and you look out for me. You are going to have a great future." As the principal of H M S, I could not be more proud to hear students speaking about you in such high regard. It is obvious that you have made an impact on teachers, students, and the overall school community. I encourage you to keep leading by example as you will continue to positively influence those around you. When asked how he felt about receiving Student of the Month, Vigo said he felt good and excited. Vigo's favorite subject is math, and he would like to be a professional soccer player when he grows up. Vigo describes his time at Hoboken Middle School as fun yet challenging. "Vigo, on behalf of Hoboken Middle School, congratulate..."
Vigo, on behalf of Hoboken Middle School, congratulations on moving up from eighth grade, and we wish you the best of luck in high school. Please join me in a round of applause for our June Student of the Month, Vigo Kronstrom. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Robin Pika-Pietra to the podium, the principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call up Senior Nazari Henry as our May Student of the Month. It is really the only the past year I've had the pleasure of getting to know Nazari and what a talented young woman she is. She is a strong leader and an exemplary student who, when she puts her mind to something, there is no stopping her. She has a good sense of humor and makes those around her laugh. She never goes far without her besties and is always kind. She is a voice among her peers and is not afraid to speak her mind and express her opinions, but she also listens to others to understand their points of view. I want to share a few words from her teachers. Mr. McHawley said she has the confidence of a champ and the drive of a champ. Nazari co-wrote and produced Nazari co-wrote and produced an amazing short video last year. It was a pleasure to work with her, and I'm so proud that she became Student of the Month. Mrs. Melendez said, "I met Nazari during her sophomore year in our ELA class. It was just after we recently reopened after the pandemic, and students were relatively shy. Thankfully, for both myself and other students, Nazari was a leader in a small class. She was always inquisitive and enthusiastic about the classwork. She took interest in the trials and tribulations of the characters that populated the stories we read. This parallels her compassion for her fellow students and people in general. She is smart, outgoing, and kind. That's a triple threat that I predict she will go very far in life." Mrs. Perry said, "I had the pleasure of teaching Nazari for two years in math, a subject where she shines, and when she struggles, she will not hesitate to ask a question. Oftentimes, we think of the best students as those with the best grades. I like to think of the best students as those who ask the best questions. Nazari is that student. She is thoughtful, highly driven, and intellectual. She is going places. Nazari is one of the most engaged students I've ever had the pleasure of teaching." And then Ms. Laughlin shared a really beautiful thought, which I thought was really captures you well. "As a teacher, you always have that one student who you keep in mind as you build your lessons. You instinctively ask, 'How would so-and-so react to this new technique or new content?' Nazari Henry is that student, the voice of reason. She is honest but constructive, sharp yet smooth. She understands the small things that can make a big difference in education and life. She doesn't back down from tough topics or discussions, but understands that you must also argue with compassion and empathy. This kind of student strengthens the class and the school community. Overall, her peers respect her, and her teachers know Nazari will always push to learn more. Next year, she will be leaving us, and she will be attending Montclair and will be studying computer science. Nazari, keep that determination and drive at the forefront. Always ask questions. Continue to be a champion because we are all confident we will be hearing great things about you moving forward. Congratulations." It's senior night here because our June Student of the Month is Mr. Daniel Weintraub. He's never been up here before. He has been telling Ms. Gleason and I for the past year. So here we are, the final Student of the Month. It's his last moment. You can tell by looking at Daniel's transcript that he has undisputed academic talents and has took almost every AP level class that we offer. Daniel has the highest GPA for the class of 2024, 4.683, which makes him the valedictorian of the class of 2024. That is not a small feat. Committed is the word that comes to mind when I think about Daniel. Committed to academics, committed to athletics, committed to co-curriculars, and anything that will further his education. I shudder at the amount of work he does. I had the pleasure of sitting with him and Mrs. Gleason around college application times. And do you remember this? When we were sitting there and you were spiraling and he was talking and it was like U-Chicago time, all that stuff. And I had to walk out in like 20 minutes. I was like, and Gleason goes, "Welcome to my life." What goes on in his mind is really so fascinating. And even though he makes it appear like it comes easy, he puts a lot of hard work into that. Ms. Tank shared, "Daniel is known for his dedication and commitment to delivering high-quality results on time every time. His hard work in nature combined with his technical expertise makes him an A student in my class every year. He took Algebra II, Precalc, and AP Calc AB with me, and then he went to Columbia to take Calculus BC. He uses his understanding, skills, and reasoning very well to work towards math solutions. Overall, an outstanding student." Daniel Weintraub is one of a kind. He is mature, thoughtful, creative, intellectual, advanced. Although he knows to never doubt Miller. So we know who this is coming from. What I've always respected most about Daniel is his organizational skills. His weekly calendar of events is intense with him juggling multiple clubs and activities daily, and yet he stays on top of everything as if this activity he is showing up to or working on is his only priority. Time management is the key to life, and Daniel has mastered that throughout his school year, career, really making the most of all opportunities that presented themselves to him, which has allowed him to be an extremely well-rounded young adult. I cannot wait to see what mark he leaves on the world. His presence will truly be missed in the theater and chorus department as he is talented and responsible, he is the most talented and responsible person that I could always count on. Mr. Stasiak also shared that Daniel is an irreplaceable fixture in the choir, singing multiple solos in his career and leading his baritone section when he wasn't singing a solo. Daniel is also the impetus behind the newly-formed men's choir, which wowed the audience at the concert with their rendition of Shaboom. Life could be a dream. You will get to hear him sing lead on his song at the Hoboken High School graduation on Tuesday night. Mr. Di Bernardo shared that not only is a model student, but Daniel's aptitude for learning is second to none. His thirst for knowledge is unquenchable. Daniel's foundation has been formed here at Hoboken High School and will only continue to evolve as he pursues higher education, whose potential knows no bounds. While we will miss Daniel, he will be taking this show on the road to Yale University, majoring in urban studies. We look forward to hearing his accomplishments when he comes to visit us next year. Congratulations." At this time, I have the pleasure in inviting Mr. Fernandez to the podium. I want to share a little something about Mr. Fernandez. He was at Wallace for many years, and this past year, he came over to Hoboken High School, and he was gonna teach innovation science in this really cool lab and wear a lab coat every day. And it just so happens, all of this resulted in a first-place team in the New Jersey Steam Challenge. Congratulations.
I decided to leave the lab coat at home tonight, and my wife said, "Go with the suit." I said, "Good, good choice." Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, administrators, staff, students, families, friends, Hoboken community. I think I nailed everybody. My name is Jose Manuel Fernandez, and I have the privilege of teaching and coordinating the Innovation Science Technology Entrepreneurship Program at Hoboken High School. This year, our class embarked on their maiden voyage, implementing a cross-curricular approach, integrating the arts, engineering, marketing, computer-aided design, business planning, and storytelling. Our goal was to ideate new inventions, plan and execute goals and objectives, and ultimately create products and services aimed at improving people's lives. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to celebrate the remarkable first-time achievement of our high school in their first-place victory in the New Jersey Steam Tank Challenge. The New Jersey Steam Tank Challenge was initiated by the New Jersey Board of, sorry, School Board Association and in collaboration with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. It's a K through 12 innovation entrepreneurship competition that encourages students to use design thinking and customer-centered design to solve real-world problems. During the competition, students identified a problem, developed a value proposition, created a prototype, improved on the prototype, made a pitch deck, and presented their ideas. And then on top of that, they would have to defend their ideas and answer questions from judges that range from the arts, sciences, laypeople alike. And they did spectacularly. This year, 500 teams competed in the competition, and of the high schools, it whittled down to 24 teams. Their product was called the Rice Pack for your aches, strains, and pains. It's a product designed to effectively reduce pain and support healing for injured joints. It blended practicality with creativity, and this innovative product was inspired by the team's members, actually specifically Olivia, who had had an injury, and most of them, actually all of them being student athletes, had a perspective on what it's like to be hurt and injured while playing sports. Their story was so powerful and relatable that it earned them a first place in the entire competition. Jennifer Shield, the coordinator of the Steam Tank Challenge, shared with me, "The Hoboken High School team outperformed every other high school in the state in every category. It wasn't even close." Besides winning first place in state, they also received distinctions in the following categories: creativity in the arts, sustainability, collaboration with subject matter experts, and societal impact. And getting to know the students over the course of the year, there is no surprise why. I could go on and on about that, but instead, I'm gonna call each one of them up and just kind of share a little anecdote about the team. I'll start with Vivian. I did this last minute, so I just handed it, said, "You're presenting."
Hi, my name is Vivian Allen, and I'm here to talk about Jay Malik. Jay was the technical mastermind of the team. His unwavering dedication, natural leadership, and exceptional technical expertise combined with his calm and focused demeanor set a high standard for the team. Jay never stopped working, even up to the final day, when Jay was still refining aspects of the 3D print to make the best possible design. That's Jay.
Next, I'll call up Benny, Benjamin.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Gabriel, and I'm here to talk about Simon Sandonato. Simon was the linchpin of the team. His collaborative spirit, helpful nature, and insightful contributions, along with his extensive research on sports injuries and market products, set the team up for success.
Olivia?
Hi, my name is Olivia Gallo, and I'm here to talk about Vivian Allen. Vivian was the driving force pushing the team forward. Her exceptional work ethic and diverse talents ranging from sewing the prototype to presenting and solving complex problems set her apart. Without Vivian's various skills, the team would have only had the concept of the product.
Jay?
Hi, my name is Jay, and I'm here to talk about Olivia Gallo. Olivia was the team's muse. She was the original inspiration for the product, and her creativity ignited the Rice Pack concept. Olivia's artistic talent crafted the original design schematics, and her empathy and collaborative spirit were vital, making her contributions indispensable to the team's triumph.
And last but certainly not least, Simon?
Hi, my name is Simon, and I'm here to talk about Benjamin Gabriel. Benny was the GOAT of sales. His personable nature, infectious humor, and inquisitive curiosity made him not only a joy to work with, but also a key player in the team's efforts.
I am so proud to honor these five students who led our school to victory. Their perspiration, collaboration, innovation, dedication, and inspiration deserves our admiration and celebration. They've demonstrated how brilliant young minds can really make a real-world impact. I would like to now give you all medals, if you could please rise, and please accept these medals as a token of our immense pride and appreciation for your hard work, creativity, and outstanding achievements. And at the risk of sounding like an infomercial, but wait, there's more. I would like to present Ms. Pick with this plaque to be placed outside the Innovation Lab commemorating this significant achievement. Our first-place victory, first time. Let's see what I write here. This award recognizes the product and its inventors and will serve as a lasting reminder of what our students can accomplish when empowered to innovate and think big. And looking at the talent that's coming to the high school over the next few years, I can tell you this is just the beginning. As we expand the program, we will be looking at newer, more competitive challenges, and I can't wait to see what our innovators create next.
Thank you.
I just want to say in summation, thank you again for this opportunity. This year has been amazing and incredible. I'm so proud to share this moment with all of you. Congratulations again to our students and to all the teachers, friends, families who's guided and supported them along the way. Students and families, don't forget to stick around. We're gonna take some pictures in the hallway, and thank you again so much. Have a wonderful night. Sorry for taking so much of your time. Sorry for taking so much of your time.
Congratulations to all of our students recognized tonight, to our Students of the Month. Have a great summer, rest up, and we look forward to hearing exciting things about each and every one of you next year, including our seniors who are off to college. And to our Steam Tank Champions, congratulations. Keep up the great work as well. I think you're all freshmen, so you have three more years of doing great things, so congrats. We're gonna take just a minute break in case anybody needs to leave. We are then going to resume the meeting and hear from our student government representatives and go into the business portion of our meeting, so we understand everybody's busy. If anyone needs to leave, we understand. Okay, we'll get started again. Next, we are going to move into our Student Government Reports, and I would like to invite Nishan Bala to the podium from the Hoboken Middle School.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Hoboken Board of Education, and all others in attendance tonight. My name is Nishan Bala and I'm an eighth-grade student at Hoboken Middle School. It is a privilege to stand before you this evening and represent Hoboken Middle School and share the exciting events and programs from last month. During the weekend of May 16th, the Hoboken Community showed their support for the district production of Harry Potter and the Chris Child. This outstanding musical created a lot of buzz around town and even on NBC. Hoboken Middle School is incredibly proud of our talented and driven students. On May 20th, the Foxy Theater Award Ceremony took place at Montclair State University. As I mentioned last month, Hoboken Middle School's production of Descendants was nominated for a plethora of awards. Hoboken Middle School won Outstanding Achievement by acting ensemble in a musical. This recognition is well-deserved and a testament of our theater department's hard work and dedication. In addition to Hoboken Middle School's outstanding achievements in the theater, we would also like to acknowledge our sixth-grade John Hawkins CTY students. This month, our sixth-grade CTY students had the opportunity to compete in the Hudson County Gift and Talented Cordarism Academic Bowl in Secaucus. Hoboken Middle School team came in second place. The Academic Bowl was a unique learning opportunity for gifted learners that maximize their talents and abilities. The Hoboken team displayed great sportsmanship, teamwork, and knowledge. The day ended with a trophy and medals for every student. We are so proud of these students for their great achievement. From May 28th to June 5th, Hoboken Middle School hosted its Tiger for the Day series at Bryant Elementary, Wallace Elementary, and Connor Elementary Schools. Hoboken Middle School ambassadors from student council, best buddies, National Junior Honor Society welcomed our future Tigers and facilitated an array of activities. Our future Tigers attended sixth-grade classes, became acquainted with teachers, learned how to open a locker, reviewed a Hoboken Middle School schedule, learned about our electives and clubs, and even learned about the much-anticipated Hoboken Middle School sports program. Hoboken Middle School is excited to officially welcome our rising sixth graders in September. On June 3rd, Hoboken Middle School has participated in the New Jersey Math League Contest. Math contests give students an educationally enriching opportunity to participate in an academically-oriented activity and to gain recognition for mathematical achievement. These contests help to enrich mathematics programs and each contest covers appropriate to the grade level. Congratulations to our school and district-level winners. Winners received a certificate on June 10th and title of MathWiz. A special congratulation goes to the Summer Path Poster Contest-winning posters. The Summer Path Poster Contest contributes to a celebration of creativity, talent, and community spirit. Each poster submitted and represents not only artistic prowess, but also the reflection of vibrant culture and diversity that defines our school district. The Path Poster Contest Ceremony took place at the NJ Transit Hoboken Terminal on June 6th. The training platform showcased the 22, 25 winning posters from students K through 8. Path voted and determined the top 25 poster winner from each grade category and grand prize winner based on the Summer Fun theme. Hoboken Middle School's seventh-grade students, Jalen Breviles and Sienna Hyman, both landed in the top 25. Sienna's poster was top three contender. Job well done to our creative seventh-grade Tigers. As Hoboken, as Hoboken Middle School closes out the school year, we have several exciting, exciting events coming up in the week. The National Junior Honor Society induction will take place tomorrow evening. Few days on June 13th, our Classroom Without Walls Club will be visiting Washington DC this Friday. And last but not least, we're excited to celebrate our eighth-grade students during the Eighth Grade Moving Up Ceremony, which will take place on June 18th at 11:00 AM at Lewis Tagleary Jr.'s Studio. Thank you, Hoboken Board of Education, for allowing me to speak for you tonight, and have a great summer. Go Tigers!
Thank you, Nishan, for a great HMS update, and we hope you have a great summer as well. Next, we'd like to invite Jenna Siriyo from Hoboken High School.
Good evening, my name is Jenna Siriyo and I'm the Hoboken High School Student Government School Representative, and it is an honor to speak to you for the last time today. Our Student Government Officer elections are being held tomorrow, June 12th. All positions are up for election: president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, school board rep, me, and the newly-created position of media manager. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Student Activities Office had a productive and busy month. The high school has been busy with Crepe testing and we are gearing up for the Class of 2024 culminating events beginning Thursday. First, with the Hoboken High School Senior Awards Dinner at 6:00 PM at the Hoboken High School Auditorium, followed by the Senior Barbecue on Friday at the stadium, and the Senior Breakfast and Senior Movie Night on Monday. We can only imagine how tired poor Mr. Munoz is. For the National Honor Society, we recently inducted 55 new members and will bid farewell to 18 amazing seniors. The NHS had its biggest group of candidates to date this year. For the Yearbook Club, we would like to thank Ms. McGreevy and the entire Yearbook staff. The seniors cannot wait to see the final product this week. Now for athletics, we would like to congratulate the following softball players on receiving All-League Awards yesterday for the HCIL American Division. For All-Division First Team, we had Alexa Porcello and Isabella Pisano, our shortstop and our pitcher. Honorable mentions go to Sarah Burns and Misha Mercado. Congratulations to the following baseball players on receiving All-League Awards yesterday for the HCIL National Division. Our Player of the Year was Max Kazada. For the All-League, we had Adrian Taverra, Ethan Ortiz, and Vincenzo Torre. Honorable mentions go to William Herrera and Peter Stelli. For Red Wings Boys Lacrosse, congratulations to the following student athletes on their All-Conference honors. Second-team selections go to Miles Angley, our second-team midfield, and Gabe Mestry, our second-team defense. Honorable mentions go to Noah Gibbs-Garcia. Congratulations to the following student athletes on their All-Conference honors for girls lacrosse. Our first-team selections go to Gabriela Terranelli and Skylar Kowalski. Our second-team selections go to Maria Boyahin and Alina Schisler, and honorable mentions go to Dallas Connors. Congratulations to the following track and field students for their All-County honors. We have Samantha Godimer, our second-team All-County in the 800 meters, and Hudson Tsang for an honorable mention in the 100 and 200. A quick side note, the graduation for Hoboken High School is at Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Lewis M. Tagleary Stadium. Thank you very much for this opportunity and it has been an honor to be able to speak in front of you this year. And as always, go Red Wings!
Thank you, Jenna, for being here and for always providing such a thorough and informative report, and happy summer to you. Okay, next, we'll go into our committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a Business Administrators Report tonight?
I want to inform the board, question came up on the out-of-district tuition. There is a repeat of initials and those are two separate students in two separate grades, so that is not a duplicate as was suspected by one of our board members. From our Finance Committee meeting last Friday, we've added today several additional resolutions, including an updated bills list, and we also added the minutes. We deleted one facilities request because it was not board approved, excuse me, it was not approved by our director of facilities. If you have any questions regarding the deletion and/or all the addition resolutions that were added, kindly let me know and I will give you an update individually on whatever your questions may be.
Okay, thank you. Curriculum, Mr. Grana.
Thank you, Vice President. So, there are two items tonight for the Consent Agenda. The committee recommends a yes vote on both. The first is 9.01. This is the acceptance of the Advanced Placement Grant for 2024 for AP African-American Studies. And the second is 9.02, which is the acceptance of the 2024 Climate Change Education Resilience Award. In fact, 9.02, we originally had applied for about $32,000. We were offered the opportunity to be eligible for an additional 43, so this approval for $75,000 will go to two new courses we'll be able to run in our Innovation Science and Tech Lab in September, which is Innovation Environmentalism and Studies of Climate Change and Sustainability. You know, I have other just advisory notes, but I sent those out in the minutes. The committee urges a yes vote on our consent items. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Facilities. Mr. Delatorre.
The Facilities Committee met on Thursday, June 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Delara, Mr. Grania, Mr. Caligi, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. One quick note, Mr. Caligi will be meeting this week with the architects to discuss the removal of the scaffolding around HMS. Plan is to assess and restore any elements that may need attention. Activity will commence once school is out. That's it.
Thank you. Finance, Ms. Conna.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Friday, June 7th at 11:00 AM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Angley, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. We recommend agenda items in Sections 11 and 12 for approval. Majority of the items on this month's agenda are typical during this time of the year. They are required to operate the district for the next school year, 2024, 2025, such as your approval of your payroll schedule, approval of meal prices, approval to close out this fiscal calendar year, approval of the tax payment schedule to the Hoboken City to receive current expense tax levy and debt service tax levy. Also, there are a couple other items that I'd like to point out. 11.06, you'll note there are 18 tuition contracts for out-of-district students for the school year 24, 25. 11.08, for this current school year, there was a need for additional occupational and physical therapy services for students costing an additional $389,000. 11.14 and 11.15, there were a transfer of funds to the maintenance reserve and legal reserve. This is to address unanticipated facilities needs for next year and unanticipated legal costs and settlements. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, Ms. Katamatory.
Good evening. The Governance Committee met on Thursday, June 6th, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Mr. Grania, Ms. McGurk, and myself. The committee recommends all agenda items for approval. As is typical at this time of year, there are a number of items relating to summer programs, as well as the approval of appointments, stipends, and other actions associated with the next school year, including of note, appointments of our athletic departments, appointments and stipends associated with athletics departments and theater departments for the next school year, some of which will begin in the summer. Couple things of note tonight. Item 10.11 covers the approval of staff for advisory curriculum writing for the Hoboken Middle School over the summer months. Similarly, Items 10.12 through 10.15, as well as 10.19 and 10.23, cover the approval of faculty and staff for and related to various summer programs run by the district. 10.24 includes the approval of various additional scholarships for the graduating class of 2024. We again thank all these individuals, families, and organizations for their support of our seniors as they go out into the world and their future endeavors. 10.25 and 10.26 cover the approval of the renewal of the Business Administrator and Assistant Superintendent's contracts. We thank both the Business Administrator and the Assistant Superintendent for their service to the district and our students. And 10.27 and 10.28 include the payment of qualitative and quantitative merit goals for various administrative staff. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Wellness, Mr. Clubfeld.
Thank you. The Wellness Committee met last week. In attendance with me were Ms. Angley, Mr. Delara, Mr. Delatorre, and Dr. Johnson. There's no wellness items on the agenda, but a couple of fun things to report. Later on this summer, from mid-July through mid-August, the district will be hosting six open-field soccer nights, and these are conceived to be just for fun, dividing the soccer field into three perpendicular fields, I guess, and it's gonna be open to all kids in the community and sort of pickup teams formed roughly by, co-ed teams formed by rough age groups and just to get out during a couple of, six summer evenings and just have some fun. I think last night was the Urban Farm-to-Table Event. They were expecting about 100 people. Did that happen? Good. And that was an event to provide sort of a healthy meal for families facing food insecurity. During the summer, the district will also be having a Learn to Swim program for high school students in the district, Hoboken High School students. And the, I think the last thing I wanted, that we talked about is sort of a little uptick in absenteeism that the administration is noticing. I don't think it's, it can't be categorized as a crisis at this point, but it's a phenomenon and you can find out that just search absenteeism, education, as I did after the meeting, and there's all sorts of, it's a national phenomenon, mostly having to do with since COVID, and there's a lot of ideas and reasons why, but whatever they are, it just means students are missing valuable time in the classroom and that's what we're here to do. So, Dr. Johnson mentioned the administration will be working on ways to communicate to families, you know, the importance of contact time in the classroom and in anticipation of the 2024, 24, 25 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have a report tonight, so we'll move on to public comments on agenda items. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Conna, second by Ms. Katamatory.
Okay, can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Angley.
Abstain on 10.24 and yes on everything else.
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
I will abstain on 6.01, no.
Excuse me, abstain on what?
6.01.
Okay.
And no on 11.41.
No on what number?
11.41.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Ms. Grana.
Yes.
Ms. Conna.
Abstain on 11.41 and the rest yes. I'm sorry, abstain on 10.24. I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Clubfeld.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and I think you said we didn't have any comments on the other.
No, we did not.
Okay, so next, we'll be going into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking action, so we'll just be coming back to close the meeting. We will be approximately 45 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to proceed to Executive Session. Motion to proceed to executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Ms. Delera.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Ms. Grana.
Yes.
Ms. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, it is now 9:53, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion. Second.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, we have to say, we have to.
We're going to do the roll call to come back into the meeting. I'll call myself first. Sharon Angley, yes. Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Ms. Delera.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Granya.
Yes.
Ms. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
Okay, and with no further business, do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.